Okay, we will start this meeting at 5:32. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. Every month we get a little bit more people in here. It's awesome to see all of you. And then we've also videotaping like we do every month. Could I get an adoption of the agenda, please?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
All right. Any comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. And then 2.01, could I get a motion?
I move that Megan Marshall, Kim Fritchy, and Kathy Campbell are duly elected members of the Board of Education.
Any concerns, questions? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, now a motion for the bond election, please.
I move to accept the unofficial results of the June 2nd, 2020 bond issue.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, I will turn it over to Dr. Miller.
First, I'd like to thank each of our board members for their service this evening. These, as a reminder, these are voluntary positions and it goes far beyond a monthly meeting. Each of the board members here is involved in committee work, pop-up work sessions, hours of weekly reading, and preparation for our monthly meetings. Each of our members on the dais step forward because they were called to serve the students of our community. We know that board governance is critical to our pursuit of excellence for students. Tonight is bittersweet. We have two board members that will be leaving us and later this evening, we will also be gaining two new board members who share that same dedication and commitment to our mission. First, I'd like to recognize Jackie Clark, formerly Summit alumni and our dedicated University of Missouri fan and Drew Locke supporter. Her time on the board, Jackie.
Oh my gosh, is she okay?
Is that Linda?
No, it's your head.
Are you okay? Are you okay? Linda, are you all right?
Yeah, the chair's got screws.
Okay, good, good, good.
Is she standing or sitting?
Jeremy, did you get all of that by chance?
All right, Jackie, back to you. During her time on the board, Jackie received her distinguished board member certification from MSBA. That requires her to receive her essential advanced and master certifications. In addition, it requires 20 MSBA credits, required readings, and reflections, again, her commitment time outside of these board meetings. She's presented on behalf of LSR VII at the 2019 MSBA. She presented on effective legislative relations. In 2018, she presented at the statewide MSBA conference on the topic of equity. In 2019, she also presented at the National School Boards Association on the topic of equity. More than that, Jackie is a board member who is driven by her convictions. Over the course of this year, she has served the board well through her business savvy and her advocacy acumen. Personally, I've learned from her over the importance of strategic communication in our discussions. I want to thank Jackie for your service to the Board of Education. Dennis has the proud distinction of being a former teacher of a number of our school board members.
Well, thanks.
Former government teacher. He grew through the LSR VII ranks to become the principal of Bernard Campbell Middle School, where I had the good fortune of being hired by him in 1996. I could share a few memorable Campbell stories, but we'll save that for another day. Yeah. Dennis has served our community as a former city alderman and then elected to run for school board three years ago. During his time on the board, he's served on the CAC Steering Committee, the CAC, the Finance Committee, and he inherently understands the importance of site-based leadership and strong community involvement within our schools. Dennis is a true Rotarian and lives by the motto, "Service Above Self." Personally, I want to thank you for always leading with your heart and always putting kids first.
Thank you.
Then we move on to 4.01, just retiring board signed aye. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you both.
Ladies, could you raise your right hand? Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of school director.
Discharge the duties of school director.
N and four.
N and four.
Reorganize School District Number Seven.
The reorganize School District Number Seven.
Of Jackson County.
Of Jackson County.
State of Missouri.
State of Missouri.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
According to law.
According to law.
Thank you. Please have a seat at the dais.
I'll now bring this meeting to order, and do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
We have a motion on the table to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
At this time, I'll call for nominations for the president.
I'd like to nominate Ryan Murdock.
Second.
If there are no further nominations, nominations are closed.
One item, if I could. One microphone, Kathy. I'm new at this. One item that I would like to ask is, in looking at board policy, I didn't find a policy that speaks to the roles of president or vice president. There is certainly a board policy that speaks to treasurer, speaks to secretary, and as a board member. And so my ask was, if as a body, as a group, that we could look to the MSBA guidelines of what that template of a policy is and follow that tonight in lieu of having that actual policy, and that we could consider as a board, within the next two to three months, making sure that we have a policy going forward regarding these roles and what the responsibilities of those roles are.
Okay, just so clarification, that's something you'd like the administration to look into.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Ryan Murdock has been nominated for president. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. At this time, I will hand over the presiding duties to your board president.
Before we get to 1.03, which is the nomination and vote for vice president, I wanted to take just a very brief moment to say thank you very much, one, for entrusting this duty in me, but two, I wanted to say thank you to Julie for her time, your energy, your commitment as president of the board. I think for those of us sitting up here, we know that the last year has not been easy. And Julie and I did work well together, even when we didn't agree on things. She consistently communicated with us as board members, brought issues to us when they were arising. We held leadership meetings together with the superintendent and sent out those notes to all board members to make sure everyone was kept up to date, which is something we will continue to do. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for your service as board president. We are ready for item 1.03, which is the election of the vice president. So I will be calling for any nominations for vice president of the board.
I'd like to nominate Kim Fritchy for vice president.
I would like to nominate myself.
Are there any other nominations for the board vice president? Okay, at this point, we will be voting on the election of the vice president. Okay, go ahead.
All right, I just have a couple quick questions. So I will start with Megan. If you were to become a leadership role, what would we expect from you as members of our team, of your team?
Board Member Don, I have an answer to your question. But first, I would like to hand these out and I can answer your question and follow on questions.
Is this one sat or?
It's one sat, yes ma'am. Now, while you pass those down and kind of look through them, I just want to make it clear that I know that we may not have the votes to pass a majority. I understand that. I know that this vote is symbolic. This is unprecedented times of social unrest, but it's necessary. The young people standing outside the building and an overwhelming number of Lee Summit residents I had the opportunity to speak with during the campaign deserve change. Tonight, we have an opportunity to fix what is broken within LSR VII. There have been a number of missteps over the past few years, such as voting no on the equity plan before voting yes, making racially insensitive remarks from the dais that did not benefit anyone, especially not the children, failing to appreciate the depth and pain of racism, discrimination, and prejudice has inflicted on our student body of all races. The past few years, our students and families' voices have gotten louder and they cannot be discounted or brushed aside any longer. Our students deserve better, our community deserves better. They deserve to have advocates for them, specifically those that have been elected to oversee the environment in which their children spend the majority of their day. They deserve change and they deserve it right now. Over 400 former students, many of which who are outside, have come together to seek resolve and progress in social justice and systematic racism in our very own school district. One of the forms I've given to you were names of, right now it's over 500 students who have signed a petition, some going back as early as the class of 2000, which is the year I graduated high school, until now, with 2020 class representing over 50 students who have signed this. These students say that hate has been a daily tolerance, but they won't tolerate it any longer. In their list of demands for our school district, which is also part of the packet that I provided you, they are listing specific demands for teachers, administrators, such as racially sensitivity, racial sensitivity, prohibiting the use of racial slurs even for pedagogical purposes, for the administrators, to ensure that one counselor per school is trained in PTSD and crisis counseling, and the counselors specialize in relevant disciplines so that they can help students on account of need rather than alphabetical order. They demand that district policies that protect the LGBTQ community against harassment. These are demands of over 500 of our community members that we serve, many of whom are outside. There are also members of our community who have put together a change.org petition to speak directly to racial discrimination within our own school district. In your packets is also statements directly from them and their families. Some of their statements, Jennifer Sterkey, Lee's Summit is a hostile environment when it comes to change. It's time for our children to have better. Andrea Martin, equality for all means equality for everyone, regardless of race, religion, sexual orientation. Enough is enough. Siri, as a former black LSR student, I suffered continuous microaggressions from staff and students alike. I never want another student to go through this. Makaya Bruce, I was once a student in LSR VII for 12 years. I was labeled as a problematic child who also needs extra help and needed to be in remedial classes. My parents argued that I was neither a problem child nor needed extra help. I went on to be in advanced and IB courses in middle school and high school. I recently graduated college within four years and now have a bachelor's finance degree. I work for a wealth management investment banking company based out of New York City. The LSR VII School District has always been prejudiced towards black students and labeled them as trouble. In elementary school, where I spent part of my time at Woodland and Sunset Valley, I remember being treated so poorly at Sunset Valley. I was on a program tracking my behavior. I sat by myself away from all students and constantly in the principal's office or a counselor as if I had problems. I remember being strongly punished for minor things like talking in class. Yet, when students, white students, decided I was a student they would kill, they had one day of school suspension, playing games and having fun. LSR VII needs to do better. As a child, this is mortifying. I know of other situations about other black students within a district. In high school, a student walked around wearing a Confederate flag bandana. The school asked him to remove it and teachers took to Facebook arguing that it should be worn. I made a comment and the next thing you know, I was in the principal's office saying I was inciting for people to attack him. Those were lies. Do better, it's about time. And last, but certainly not least, Jennifer Roundtree, I want to live and pay taxes in a city that accepts all people. Now, as we look forward to electing new leadership on the board, there are certain things that, like you asked, ma'am, that is expected of a leader. In your packets, I've also included examples from one specific school district, specifically the Blue Springs School District, who have, within the past 24 hours, have spoken directly to the national incidents that Lee Summit is not exempt from, as I just explained to all of you. And out of their policy, out of their letter, excuse me, came three policies. The first one was a review and action committee to address racial issues that occur in our school district. This group will investigate complaints and determine actions and resolutions for students and staff that experience racism. The second is a board policy and review committee to examine current policy and recommend changes and additions to support our diverse students and staff. And the third is a curriculum equity committee. They will begin the process of examining resources, courses, and opportunities for improvement. Following that in your packet is an example of this release statement that LSR VII issued. Our plan, as it's read here, is part of that commitment means being available to listen and learn, especially from the young people whom we serve. So in response to your question as to how one would be a leader, Board Member Don, if LSR VII claims to be the best, then that's what we need to be. We cannot continue to be outpaced by other districts who issue policies while we listen and learn. We can listen and learn and act. If we want to be the best, we have to be the best and we have to act on these things that are going on. Those children outside demand better. They demand action. And that is why I am here, because I am their voice. Blue Springs has a beautiful blueprint. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, fellow board members. We don't. It's right here. We just adopt it and modify it to our needs. So our children feel heard and we don't have comments like on this change.org petition. This is unsat. It's embarrassing. So as a leader, moving forward, I believe that you must be a champion for all students and families, leading on issues which matter the most to them, not just a procedural guru or a master of Robert's Rules of Order. Because what we've seen is that without transparency and accountability, there is only an illusion of order, with very real trauma hidden behind smoke and mirrors. So to specifically answer your question on how I would be a leader, I would get out in front of these issues and make sure that our students, who we promise to prepare for success in life, are heard and that actionable things are done so that this never happens to another student as long as I am sitting here on this dais.
My next. Okay, so my next question is, what timeframe may we expect from you replying to emails, texts, and voicemails as part of your team?
Emails from whom?
From us.
Immediately, immediately. I take this position very seriously. So if a response is needed right away, then that's when it will happen, whether it's via phone call, email, et cetera, et cetera. I come from a background of 20 years in the Marine Corps. When an answer needs to be given to those who serve, you stop what you're doing and you give an answer. And that is a commitment that I signed up to give.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So Kim, can you talk about your leadership role and what we can expect as, when you're a leader?
Thank you very much. Well, first of all, I feel like I'm qualified to be a leader for our board for several reasons. I've held several leadership roles in our community and most of those have been associated with helping our students. I was president of Lee Summit Cares for several years. I have helped with the ProDoe Youth Center in providing funding and providing meals and help supervising field trips and things for ProDoe Youth Center. I'm a member of the Lee Summit Educational Foundation, raising funding for our schools and our students. And I'm a kindergarten Sunday School teacher for the last 18 years, working with our kiddos. And in each of those realms, I've worked with all of our kiddos of all colors. And I love our kids and I think that's one of the things that people know about me is I'm all about our students and I'm all about helping our students in the Lee Summit LSR School District, each and every one of them. During the past three years on the board, I've made it a point to visit, to go out and actually spend time at every single school and most of the departments in our school district. I felt like it was necessary to do that because I needed to get to know each of those schools and discover what was special about each of our schools. I know the difference between a Lee Summit Elementary and a Longview Elementary. I know the disparities that happen and that have been happening in some of our schools and some of the things that we need to do about those disparities to bring those into equity. That's a lot of what our bond issue is going to address and I'm glad that, I'm so happy that our voters overwhelmingly voted for our bond issue so that we can address some of those issues of building equity. But in addition to the building equity issues, we need to really look carefully at some of our other equity issues for our kids. I've noticed in talking with some of our principals and going around visiting with the teachers and just looking at conditions, I think we need to look at what physical conditions and others contribute to a better education for each of our kids. conditions and others contribute to a better education for each of our kids. My commitment to this school district is to work collaboratively with our board members in a respectful manner. I don't want to go behind the scenes. I don't want to, you know, do anything that would harm another school board member. I want us to be very transparent. That is my commitment. I think those of you who've known me and I've been around here, I know I'm probably, now that Dennis has stepped off the dais, I'm probably the oldest one on the dais among us right now, but been around Lee Summit for a long time, know this community and I know our schools. And I think people know that I give honest answers. I'm responsive. When people ask me questions, call me, email me, I'm very responsive to our patrons. And if at all possible, I try to answer as quickly as possible. Service to our schools and our community is my major commitment, but especially to our kids. The kids always come first. And I think some of the things that have happened in the last three years have taken our focus off of kids and we need to get back to kids. I do want to address a few things. I think there, repeatedly, there's a repeated voice out there that just keeps saying things about my service and my voting record that just really are not true. I don't think, just saying it over and over and again doesn't make it true. Okay? I voted, I think I voted no twice over the last three years. In each of those votes, it was not a vote against kids or against policies. My vote was based on lack of full information. And that is the truth. I am a person who likes to have full information before I make a vote. Yes, it is. You're shaking your head, but yes, it is. Okay? I, when I get that full amount of information, then I'm prepared to vote. And I think that I owe the vowers that because we are in charge of how we spend our money in our district. And when you're talking about big ticket, excuse me, big-ticket items and things that are going to cost our district a lot of money, we need to be very careful and use our decision-making power very carefully and make sure we're making the right decisions for kids. Ultimately, we have. I just want to emphasize that. I do want to say that I have read every comment on our struggle, LSR 7. And it honestly, it breaks my heart. It breaks my heart to hear all of our kids who are feeling the pain. And I think now more than ever, I mean, Dr. Buck alluded to when we were interviewing him, having listening sessions to bring folks in and listen to what they were having to say and hearing what they were saying and so that we could act on those suggestions and those issues. And I think that's more important than ever right now. Another idea, after reading our struggle, LSR 7, one idea that I had that I think has some merit, and I'd like to see us talk about it a little bit more amongst ourselves, is to create an advocacy position in each of our schools, or maybe not hiring a new position, but we need to figure out a way to have an advocacy staff member in each school, that a person that our kids of color, our kids are LGBTQ kids feel comfortable going to and talking to and explaining what has happened and how they feel and helping those students navigate through that process and getting them help and helping them to get the result that they need to feel better about themselves, feel better about the situation, and move on in a positive way. Because all of our kids need to be listened to and they need somebody to be on their side. And if we don't feel like our counselors can do that for them, then we need to train our counselors how to do it or we need to find, hire another individual who's qualified to do that for our kids because our kids deserve our best. I do want to say too, on a couple of the items that Ms. Marshall mentioned, our equity plan, if you dig into our equity plan, our equity plan actually does have some, does address curriculum revisions and it does address some policy revisions. And we had a report on that by Dr. Berger a little while back at a meeting. And it's a timeline issue. And we are getting to the point where we're ready to look at curriculum and also board policy revisions as necessary to make sure that we are following the equity plan that we unanimously voted for. So that is on the timeline and, you know, they did so much the first year and then, so we've got that still on the table and ready to roll out in the future. So we will get to that and that's a promise. Thank you.
Do I have an opportunity to respond to Kim's reference to something that I said?
If we can keep the remarks short, that would be helpful. Thank you.
In regards to the specific comment about the equity timeline and the revisions with curriculum, part of the examples that I provided to everyone was an example of Blue Springs South letter that was published June 9th. Their curriculum equity committee that they created has plans ready to go by fall of 2020. So I do believe that there are certain changes and modifications that can be done to certain plans to help guide and speed up systemic strategies to help correct some of these curriculum things. So I do agree, yes, the equity plan, the timeline, but I do believe that a leader should also know when to modify that timeline to get to the end result in a more efficient manner.
Do you have any other questions?
You had another question though?
No.
For Kim?
I have it.
Okay. Well, I made the nomination for Kim, so I don't know if you wanted me to discuss that at all or if that's...
It's not necessary. I was just calling for any more questions from board members. Okay, at this time on 1.03, we will be voting on vice president. Dr. Miller, is this a one where we need to do a roll call or do an eyes with two nominees? Okay. Okay, so, okay, so we'll, I think that's fine. If board members are okay with that, we'll raise hands. Okay? So all those in favor of Kim Fritchie as vice president, please raise your hand. All those in favor of Megan Marshall as vice president, please raise your hand. Do we have any abstentions? Okay, so Kim Fritchie is elected as vice president. It was five to one with one abstention.
Brian, I would like to comment on my vote if I could.
Sure.
I, while I share the passion and the heart that clearly I see both candidates share for our children, I feel that with Kim's experience, that brings great benefit to our district and as a board member, great benefit to her role as a board member. I do have concerns that the change that we need to see needs to happen at a much faster pace. And that's my concern in Kim in that role. I'll also share that while I definitely share Megan's commitment and action and passion for what we need to change and the equity changes that we need to see in this district, I want to see Megan as a leader, as a board member, and grow in that area ahead of having an executive role. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Mr. President, since I made the nomination, I do want to lean on this a little bit. What's that?
Go ahead, Board Member Ellen.
Well, in respect to Megan Marshall and commitment, I do not question your commitment at all because I know it's 100%. And this is fantastic. And I will tell you why, just to make it very open to all of us, why I made the nomination. And having been on this board just a year, but feeling as though I was engaged in this district for 20 years essentially, in a variety of ways, I've found that the first year on this allows for a lot more latitude, almost when you're not a president and vice president, which I think would be very, very positive for change, even though that may not appear to be the case, Ms. Marshall. I think that in reflection to a vote that I made and then changed my vote in support of EEC, again, also was based on a very thorough conversation that took place over a two-week period. And that full story and information was very clear that there was a need for that. And there continues to be a need for that. You and I have talked about that. We've talked about that. So I, I'm excited about a number of things I think you will have much more latitude in. Now, I can't speak for you, but I've found myself providing or enjoying a little more latitude where officers may not. So I think we've got tremendous opportunity here. So, thank you.
Any other comments before we move on to 1.04? Okay, we will move on to 1.04 where we need nominations for the election of the secretary, the treasurer, the assistant secretary, and the assistant treasurer. Do I have a motion?
I move the board to reappoint Lynda Isbert as Secretary of the Board of Education, reappoint Wesley Metz as Treasurer of the Board of Education, reappoint Hannah Pruitt as Assistant Secretary, and reappoint Sharon Smith as Assistant Treasurer.
So we do have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we've made all of our selections and we will be adjourning to our work session. This meeting is adjourned.
Good job.
Okay, I think we're going to go ahead and call the work session to order at this point. So we would like a adoption of the agenda, please.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the agenda in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, we have one item on our agenda, 2.01, the budget and finance presentation. And so I'll start with Dr. Miller.
Thank you, President Murdock. A couple of things. We're actually going to be talking about two specific items. Our CFO, Wesley Metz, is going to do kind of a brief budget 101, or finance 101 overview. And then really, it's going to be some discussion for the board to give us some input and direction on how we present the preliminary budget to you later this month. So we wanted to have some meaningful dialogue around that. And then the second topic that will be also under the 2.01, and it is related to finance, we're going to, Kyle Grlel's with us today and he's going to share with us some information about the potential change for Blue Parkway. So that will also be discussed tonight as there's a TIF commission hearing tomorrow night. We really want to get the new board's input on what that, and feedback. So with that, I'm going to ask both Mr. Metz and Mr. Grlel, be very careful of the cords. Mass, don't trip. Okay? All right. And Wes, do you want to kick off your presentation for us, please?
Okay, is this thing on? Yeah, okay, it's on, okay. Dr. Miller wanted me to do a presentation over finance 101. I've done this in the past. Basically, it covers school district funds, sources of revenue, review fund balances, and then some observations. And that's where we'll go over projection budget for long-term. So there are several different funds that the district utilizes. The first fund is Fund 10, which is the operating fund, or sometimes it's referred to as the incidental fund. That fund, we can pretty much pay for anything out of that if we wanted to. Special service fund or teacher fund is Fund 20. We can only pay for certified salaries and benefits out of that fund. The debt service fund or Fund 30 is restricted to repay bonds and fees associated with Fund 40 is the capital project fund. Just your, any capital project over $1,000, we pay out of that fund. Nutrition service fund is Fund 50. So our food service programs run through Fund 50. Student activity fund is Fund 60. So those would be things like sports, clubs, organizations, those kinds of things, fundraisers. Our BAS fund is Fund 80. That's for our before and after-school program. And then we track our insurance fund out of Fund 90. So DESI requires us to use four funds, Fund 10, 20, 30, and 40. All the other optional funds have to flow into Fund 10. Again, so the general revenue for teachers' fund, so the incidental and the teacher fund, when we're talking about the operating budget, it's those two funds added together. Those can be used for salaries and benefits for employees, instructional supplies, transportation costs, food service, district utilities, and so on, so forth. So when we start talking about the fund balance, those are the two funds we're adding together to describe our fund balance. At the end of June 2019, the fund balance was roughly $65 million or 29.52%. The significance of this is that we need to make sure we maintain enough revenue or enough cash to cover us for the first six months of each fiscal year. The reason for this is typically the district will receive between 40 and 50% of its revenues in January because people pay their property taxes at the end of December. And again, like I said, the debt service fund can only be used to repay bonds and the interest on the bonds and the fees associated with those bonds. The debt service levy is a fluid number, but in Lee Summit, we have agreed upon unofficially at $1.7. What I mean by it's a fluid number, what this number, this number can fluctuate from year to year if we wanted it to, to repay either the current year and the preceding year's debt. So that number can fluctuate. But we always leave it at $1.7 because that's an agreed-upon number we've had for, I don't know, many, many years. Total interest paid on our bonds in fiscal year 20 was five points, around 5.6 million. The principal was 22.7 million. The debt will be totally paid in 2006. Well, that changed last Tuesday, or, excuse me, 2036. It will be now 2040 because typically you issue bonds over 20 years. Okay, capital projects, again, it's anything over $1,000. And it's direct buildings, do additions to buildings, remodeling, construction, furnishings, payments on lease purchase obligations, purchase of real estate, and other capital expenditures. And this talks again about the $1,000. At the end of 1819, we had a fund balance in the capital projects of about $20.4 million. Sources of revenue. We have three main sources of revenue, local, state, and federal. So source of revenue, typically our budget's about 64% local, 32% state, and about almost 4% federal. Your local is made up primarily of property taxes. So you hear a lot of talk about the assessed valuation every year. That's where most of the money comes locally. Our current operating fund, or, excuse me, our current local tax levy is $4.2080 per $100 assessed valuation. The state requires us to take it out to four decimal places. State funds primarily are the state foundation formula. So when we talk a lot, you'll hear me talking about the state adequacy target. We use that number to, in the formula, to calculate our state funding from that. Prop C, Prop C sales tax fund, it is actually considered local, but it comes from the state. Prop C, Prop C Sales Tax Fund, it is actually considered local, but it comes from the state. The Classroom Trust Fund, which is gaming, transportation, vocational education, early childhood special education, and parents as teachers. Those are the primary funds that we receive, revenue sources. Yes, sir.
Quick question for you. Are you going to talk a little bit, a little bit about the transportation aspect? Because you'll say it's funded by the state, and yet, dollar for dollar, we're...
There's a, I'm going to talk about a long-term projection, and then what, we've had conference calls with the governor, and I'll go through the transportation, what's, how that's being...
It's a big deal for lease summit.
Yes, it's a big deal for lease summit. Big deal for all school districts in Missouri.
Sure.
Okay, so the basic formula is the majority of the money that we receive from the state. It's based on the weighted average daily attendance times the state adequacy target times the dollar value modifier, less local effort equals what the state funding is. State adequacy target. Currently, at the beginning of this fiscal year, the state was projecting they were going to give us $6,375 per ADA. We were on a conference call with the governor last week, and they're going to fund that at 96.5% this year, which means the state adequacy target is going to end about 6151, which is a significant reduction. It's almost $4 million to our revenue. Yeah, I forgot I put it on this page. So this year, when we first calculated, it was 69 million. It's actually going to come in closer to 65 million. He also stated that we have received all of the gaming funds that we're going to receive for this year, because part of that 69 million includes the gaming funds. So unless, because the casinos just opened, I believe, first of the month. So we don't anticipate receiving any revenue from them for the remainder of this month. They'll probably start giving us some of that gaming money in July, providing people go back to the boats, or, excuse me, go back to the gaming. At least 75% of the state formula money needs to go into the Teacher Fund. We put 100% of the state formula money, the gaming, and the Prop C, we put 100% into the Teacher Fund. And even with that, we still have to do a monthly transfer, because we still, that doesn't even give us enough revenue to cover all those expenditures. And we transfer that out of the local into the Teacher Fund. Okay, so the Prop C I've been talking about, that was implemented in 1982. Basically, it's one half of, let's see, it's, it's about a 1%, I believe it is. Judy, isn't that correct? It's 1%?
One cent.
Yeah, one cent, yeah. One cent out of the state sales tax. And then we get that, this year that was projected at, let's see, 1,076, I believe, ADA. I think it's going to come in almost at 975. There are some talks that it may actually hit $1,000 per ADA. Again, that's based on people spending money. So as the economy's been shut down, that has reduced a little bit. We voted to have a Prop C waiver, a partial Prop C waiver. So we get to, we only have to roll back our operating levy by 13.4, excuse me, .1342 cents. In the future, the district could go after a full waiver if they choose. That would generate a little bit more revenue for the operating. Currently about, well, okay, so this was before the election. I think some people had it on the election, so I'm not sure if this number is still correct. But before the election, it was about 87.6% of the schools in the state had passed it. We're one of the few that have not. A full waiver, excuse me. Federal money. We get about 3.7%, about 3.8% of our revenue comes from federal. Federal is things like Title I, Title II, Title III for immigration, Title IV, we use that for technology. We also get special education funds. Part of our early childhood special education is funded through federal. Free and reduced lunch comes from federal. Some of our, some of our grants and things come through there that we can apply for annually. Our percentage is much lower than what the state average is, which, a lot of it's based on your free and reduced counts, your special education counts. That's how that's, that's how those are calculated. So an observation, we run about 22, 20, 20.22% of our students are free and reduced compared to the state average of almost 49 per district. And then now I'm going to talk about, I'm going to put this up. Does anybody have any questions? I went through that pretty quick.
Just a comment, Wes. For our new board members to look at the report for this last year, we had that report. Was it at this last month's board meeting, or was it the month before, the title funding report, that, from the departments?
Last month.
Last month, yeah. So if you go back and you look into the documents for just last month, you can see this report. And that report is really good. It's very revealing. It really gives you a lot of information on exactly what the federal funding is paying for. So I just wanted to get that out there.
Wes, I have one quick question for you. On that waiver, if lease summit ever chose to apply for the full waiver, right, that you mentioned just a little bit ago, is there a certain timeframe that that has to be done in, in relation to the school year, the budget year, however that works? And how much would that generate?
If you do it before...
Right.
It takes voter approval, and it would, it's 50% plus one.
Yeah, I should have said, it's, okay, okay. And that's what I was going to ask. I didn't know if it had some of the same, like 57%, you know, all that kind of stuff. Okay.
No, it's simple majority, 50% plus one.
And do we know how much that would generate?
Oh, 13, not off the top of my head.
That's...
Sorry. 13, take .13 times 3.3, excuse me, 2.3 billion, because that's about what our assessed valuation is, divided by 100, and that'll get you there. Judy's probably got it calculated already. It's probably going to be about 4 to 5 million, probably. .13, that's what it is. It fluctuates every year. 2.3 billion, divided by 100. Or you could have took a times, what, 230,000, 230 million, I mean, yeah. 23 million. Sorry. I'm no, we're televising all this, aren't we? Yeah, I can get, I will provide you with that number when we get to that point. She's still calculating, sorry.
I was going to say, it's not 3 million dollars.
3 million.
I have 2.90.
Yeah.
2.90.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was just calculating it. Whatever number you're taking.
I just, yeah. And it fluctuates. Two years ago, it was around 20 cents. So it goes up and down based on growth in the district. Again, there's a pro forma we fill out, the state auditor's office every year. We have to submit that, then we submit it to the county. The more growth you have, the more you have to roll it back.
It really also depends on how much Prop C money we get from the state.
Yeah, yes.
That's how that number is calculated. It's the half of the actual Prop C revenue you get, the part you use back to calculate the equivalent, like, does that make sense?
Thank you, Judy. That's all right. Any other, any other questions before I go through this big, long? I've got this projecting, but you can't read it. I made a copy for everybody. I thought it'd be easier for you to read. Or I didn't make a copy, Ms. Linda did. So I presented to this similar format back in November to the board, when we were talking about what the CAC, about long-range projections. Well, so what I've done is I went in and just kind of updated the estimated revenues for this year, and updated the estimated expenditures. So I reduced the revenues because, so if we start at the top, the assessed valuation this year has come in, we've only collected about 92%. And historically in the past, we've ran about 95% to 96% collection. And also, there is $4 million in protested taxes that the county is still holding. At some point, we will receive a portion of that. I would estimate between probably 3, 2.5 to 3 million. Depends on what the state, the Board of Equalization determines their tax rate would be. So I added that into the calculation for reduction. I'm anticipating going into next year that our AV will stay flat, because if they do roll back some of those taxes and things on these protests, that will affect our assessed valuation. State aid, like I said, we had a conversation with the governor. We didn't have a conversation. He told us last week that the state adequacy target is probably going to end up about 6151 for fiscal year 20, which is again, 3.85 million dollars, roughly. We also received word that they were not going to send us a transportation funding for June at all. So basically, what I have in our formula, what we've collected so far year-to-date is what we've collected. So the difference in what the projection was and what we've collected is $266,000. Now, the state doesn't fund the transportation like it should be. It should fund about 85%. They were only funding this year projected at 19%. So it was already seriously underfunded. Our federal, we're going to anticipate that it stays flat. We will receive about $1.2 million in COVID money. We're still discussing the best way to utilize those funds. That can be used for salaries, COVID costs, those kinds of things. It's called CARES money, not COVID, excuse me. It's related to COVID. About 1.2 million. It's based on 82% of our Title I funding. And then other reductions, of course, were in nutrition services, because we weren't serving as many meals every day as we would have normally for a quarter. And again, BASS, our before-and-after-school program was shut down for a quarter. And student activities, they just weren't doing any fundraising, and we didn't have any activities for the fourth quarter. So that's going to see a reduction in revenues of around $2 million total. So that, the reduction in revenues, we've also, we're also going to see about a $2 million reduction in our expenses for this fiscal year. So with, taking all those things into account, I'm projecting that we're going to have about a 26.23% fund balance at the end of the year. Now, that fund balance is all funds. This, that's the DESI fund balance. We separate out some of our activities, like nutrition services, BASS, and student activities. We track those separately. I haven't calculated that number yet, but when I present to the board next week the budget, it will be calculated in there at that time.
Wes, could you repeat that again, what you think our fund balance is going to be?
Well, it's, right now, total all funds, it's going to be about 26.23%.
Thank you.
I lost my train of thought. Oh, nutrition services and BASS, they've always had a positive fund balance. When you get your year-to-date report for, through the end of May, you're going to notice that BASS has already eaten up all their funds. They're already in the hole. Plus, we still have another month of salaries to pay, so it's going to be even further in the hole. Food service, it's down to like 400,000. Again, by the time we get done paying all the expenses for the year, their fund balance is probably going to be zero or even negative. So at some point, we'll have to determine, are we going to try to get those two programs to reduce the negative fund balance, or if the district would just make a transfer out of operating to zero amount at the end of this year? And that'll be a discussion we'll have to have at some point, once we find the final numbers.
Wasn't it about, was it a year ago or two years ago, that we reduced the amount we were charging for our before-and-after-school services?
That is correct.
Yeah, yeah. And that has started edging down ever since we did that, because we wanted to make that more affordable for people?
Yeah, but really what's driving it this year is the COVID shutdown, because they haven't had any revenues, but we continued supporting all of our staff in our district, and we continued paying their salaries and benefits.
Okay, thanks.
So that's really the driving factor of why those fund balances have been depleted.
Thanks for the explanation.
Any other questions on that? Okay, so, so this is where it gets kind of tricky, going from this year to next year in budgeting. During the conversation with the governor, he thought that we may actually start off July with withholdings again, and potentially even going into August, which means that we may not receive very much state funds for those two months. The good thing is, the positive of that is, being the withholding on the front end, they can adjust the state adequacy target as the year progresses, and we can actually receive it on the, on the back end, like, towards the end of the year, if the economy picks up and the revenues do start coming in better. So what I have done is, I've done worst-case scenario. I put it in that it's going to stay at 6151, same as it is right now for the year, a reduction in the Prop C, down to 975, anticipating no growth in the AV. So with that being said, next year, we're going to have a deficit between 8 and 10 million dollars, starting the fiscal year, which will leave us, if it holds the whole year, 21.67% fund balance at the end of that fiscal year. That's worst-case scenario. I don't anticipate this lasting into the fall. And the governor felt like that it wouldn't last into the fall. And a lot of the other CFOs and stuff around the state are having the same kind of conversations. They think once everybody gets back into school and we start getting people moving, that the economy will pick up very quickly. Because if you think about, a lot of people have been sitting home, they haven't been spending very much money. So hopefully, when they get out, get back, get allowed to move, things should pick up very rapidly. So I was taking the worst-case scenario for the projection, and then we're going to watch it. Come August, we'll review it, once we get our AV from the county. Hopefully by then, the state will start, you know, some numbers will start improving from the state, and then we can maybe make an adjustment at that point in time. Then again, we'll do it in November, and we'll probably be watching this every month. So hopefully by January, before we start making decisions for the following year, things will be looking a lot better. If not, at that point in time, we will have to start making some potentially pretty tough decisions. Because if you follow the fund balances across, I'm anticipating in '21, '22 that things start getting back to normal, but with the opening of the new middle school, the fund balances will go down pretty rapidly. Because we weren't anticipating the loss of funds for two consecutive years. With those significant losses, that's really going to hurt our operating fund for the next two years, if it doesn't recover pretty rapidly. And I went through that pretty quick. Is there any questions? Sure, there's lots of things going through your minds.
As far as a very conservative approach going into next year, is the board supportive of us, as Wes presented? I'm really looking at that state adequacy target of 6151, using that as a basis of our budgeting for state revenue.
I think we need to, don't we?
There's going to be several budget amendments next year. There will have to be. And hopefully, as things become positive, we won't have to increase the expenditures because the expenditures were already accounted for. It's the revenue piece. We're hoping if we do any amendments, it's going to be increasing revenue, which will decrease the deficit for the year. That's, that's what we're hoping. But if we start the fall closed, that's a completely different conversation.
Well, is it, is there at any point where we're going to need to start really looking carefully at our expenditures and the additional expenditures that we haven't anticipated, or any new programming or things like that?
And that's why I recommend that we're going to try to look at something in August. Started a little earlier than what we normally would do. Normally, we would wait till like September, once the, we set our local tax rate with the AV, with the county. But I think we need to start looking in August because I didn't reduce even the building budgets or our, um, administrative budgets managers. But I did, when I sent it out, ask them to anticipate a 10% to 20% reduction come August if things aren't starting to look a little better. So hopefully, everybody took that, kept that in mind when they were doing their allocations for their budgets for next year.
On your state aid, um, what are we estimating on ADA? And is that being impacted by everything that's happened?
This year, it was a little over 17,250 with summer school. I'm hoping that it doesn't go down. I'm hoping it goes up. Because if it goes down, if our, if our enrollment drops again next year, we won't be running off the ADA for this year. We'll still be running off ADA for last year. Because when you're doing the formula, it's the highest of the current year or the previous two. So hopefully, I'm hoping that we see an increase in enrollment. Because then I can also request that money next year. I can adjust our ADA to actually get some more revenue coming in.
And a lot of that will be dependent upon how the district responds to COVID and our re-entry planning. So I think that, that's another conversation for another day, but that'll, that'll be vital to what our enrollment looks like.
Has the, has the county responded to our summer school plan yet?
So we had a meeting with county, um, uh, on Friday. We still have to submit that to the county executive. So we worked with the health department. We still need to go through the other channel.
Thank you.
Wes, at the bottom.
No, I was just, I was just going to say, does anybody else have any questions?
At the bottom is the estimated expenditure. So looking at 2021 at 3%, 3.5% the next year, 5%, that's an increase because of the schools coming online?
The middle school coming on at that point in time. So you'll see your larger increase the first year. And then after that, it's just any increases, incremental increases for step movement, or if we decide to give a, a raise of some type. So the first year, of course, it's a, you, you recognize the full cost, and after that, it's just smaller increment.
Of hiring, hiring predominantly?
Yeah. As we estimate, it's going to be between 3 and 6 million dollars, depending on how much programming we add, how much, how many, how much funds we have available. There's a lot of things that we would like to address, but again, it's all based on our funding. You know, classroom sizes, those kinds of things. Programming, new programming for students.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay. Thanks, Wes. Dr. Miller?
If you have, um, additional thoughts or questions after leaving this work session, please feel free to email us. And we'll include your questions and the responses in the Friday update like we typically do.
Well, Friday, they'll receive the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll go out in the board packet. I believe it's going out Friday. So you'll, you'll receive the preliminary budget in your board packet Friday. I've already started the majority of it, but I wanted to get your feeling before I finalized how conservative everybody wanted me to be. Because if everybody, I've talked to some CFOs, they were going to use 6375 for next year still. You know, I mean, I would rather start low and be surprised than start high and have to be like we are now trying to pull everything back.
You're talking about the state adequacy target? That number?
Yes.
6375?
Yeah.
Ours is at 6151. Okay.
Well, in, in March, that was the discussion. And that, and I believe that's what was approved in the state budget, was staying flat at 6375 going into the next year. I've never seen the kind of withholding that we're doing now at the end of the year. I mean, they've threatened before, but I've never actually seen it happen. And I think a lot of it's due to, they just don't have the cash. You know, when they moved the tax filing to July 15th, see, they, they may have a huge amount of cash come in in July, just from people paying their taxes. So that, that'll affect things too.
Just as a friendly reminder, we will spend a little time in the work session prior to the board meeting next week, so you'll get to see the preliminary budget. Have another opportunity to ask questions. We know this is significant and it impacts our planning, so we just want to give the appropriate amount of time to the discussion.
And it's worst case. I mean, I, I don't anticipate us finishing here. I think it'll be much, much, I think we'll receive more revenue and it'll be much, much lower of a deficit. I'm hoping. I'm very positive. Any other questions? Okay, Kyle? You don't need the projector, do you? Okay.
Thank you.
If it's okay, I'm going to stand out here so I can point and wave. Decided to not put this on the screen because there's a lot of information and I know some of you may want to flip around and get real close to it so you can read. So let's just talk through the information I, I passed out. On the first page, and I just want to make sure you're oriented and familiar with the proposed improvements for the Leesum High Campus. So this first page has nothing to do with the Blue Parkway project. This first page is just what we're planning and the bond issue. So on the left, you see the entire campus. Up on the north side, you'll see a new parking lot. Additional spaces up there north of kind of what they call the cage lot. There's a walkway that weaves down through on the east side of B building. Then if you go over to the, the right half of the page, that shows the new entry, the new west parking lot, and how that's going to be impacted by the building addition. So we're losing some parking on the west side of the building that we are transplanting with the parking lot that we just talked about up north. So now if you move over to the east, where the tennis courts are, you'll see that parking area is also gone. That's going to be part of some better student circulation, loading dock improvements, but Greenway and Plaza area for kids to circulate north-south through the campus. So then going to the south, um, as you all will remember, we are proposing to demolish a strip of the old building on the south elevation. And so that will allow us to get another double-loaded, um, aisle of parking along the south, south edge of the campus. Moving over onto the east side, you'll also see a parking lot over on the east side of A building. So that's, that's a parking lot that's real close to the, um, the Blue Parkway Drive where it comes in. So a quick summary of where we are with the parking. Our current site at Leesum High School has 758 parking spots. And it's in little tiny numbers there below, kind of where the north arrow is, right in the middle of the page. Yeah, I, I wrote them bigger on mine because I, further away. Okay, sorry. We are still working on how the south parking area will be configured with parking. We don't know exactly what the city's going to require with Fire Lane. And so you can kind of see some different lines along that south elevation, whether we do perpendicular parking, we may have some parallel parking, we may have to leave some of it open for Fire Lane. So if we're able to, if we can't do anything there, we'll be at 733. If we do perpendicular parking along the whole elevation, we'll be at 776. So we feel comfortable that we'll at least end up somewhere in the middle and if not having it all there, and be in a better position in parking after our renovation project than we started off before. So that's the big picture on parking on the campus. And I just wanted to have a discussion about that separate from the Blue Parkway improvements. Because that's really, they're two separate conversations. So let's flip to the next page.
Can I ask you a quick question? Do you have any idea at this point in time, how many, um, kids have permits that, and spots they need on a like day-to-day basis when school's in session?
Boy, I really don't, Judy. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just was curious.
Yeah.
In terms of, um, you know, how many spots we have available and how many might be open on a daily basis?
Yeah.
You need that prior to tomorrow?
No, but I think that would be good information for us to have.
All right.
Could I ask a question about, um, towards the beginning, you were talking about the walkway beside Building B going down to the green buildings, what we used to call the green buildings. Is that, is that just a concrete walkway, or is that fully like enclosed?
It's a concrete walkway. It'll have some pavers. We are still evaluating the, the enclosure plan for how we meet student safety needs on the campus, so there will be some additional fencing and that open area also for kids to, to move outside.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's always been kind of one of the bugaboo's of Leesum High School is the distance between the buildings and getting where you need to go, especially when it's bad weather, when it's snowy or rainy outsides.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, on the next plan, the left side of the page is, that's the exact same plan we just looked at. We have the, the improvement plan shown in, in black and shades of gray. Overlaid on top of it is, um, the Blue Parkway addition. So what you see in blue is currently what would be, um, constructed as part of the, in the public right-of-way. Am I still, okay, sorry, I keep going too close. So that would all be public right-of-way work. We, um, had a good conversation with Michael Park yesterday, the city engineer. And we were able to determine that the concrete approaches in the right-of-way, as well as any retaining wall work that potentially could need to be done, that would be included as a part of their, their public work, their public project. So anything that is shown in red on this plan would be work that would be additional work that would needed to be funded in some other way, aside currently from what the city's project can account for, or from what our bond project can account for. So let's flip to the next page. It shows a, a larger view.
Sure.
Thank you. We weren't aware of that when the original construction plans were drawn up and when the bond issue, when, when did we become aware of that, this change?
We became aware of it, um, I think it was last fall, late fall, early winter.
This past fall.
Yeah, last fall.
So was it too late at that point to adjust in the bond issue, to adjust for this?
Well, we were pretty, if I remember correctly, um, we were, we were working with CAC at that time to really develop the package. So we were pretty far in the process when this discussion began.
Okay, thank you.
So the next slide, or next page is, wow, it's a paper slide, isn't it? The next, the next page is just a blow-up of the, the Blue Parkway, um, information. So, you know, and I just want to qualify too. Previously, when we looked at this, it's a very quick turnaround. I mean, we heard about the project. We had our engineer just in a, really a week's time, put together some plans and presented it to you guys, put together a quick cost estimate. It was just a real quick turnaround. And even with this, we are, we're not wanting to spend a bunch of money on engineering for this thing. We're just trying to get a feasibility put together of what would be impacted and what the rough costs are going to be. So, um, this plan has been developed a little bit more, um, so that we can further evaluate the cost. But there were a lot of questions from the city about parking and infrastructure and what's in and what's out, and what are you doing in your project? And, um, so want to use this document, this plan, to answer some of those questions. So again, in a larger scale, the blue area is included in the city's, um, the city's contract. Everything in, in black, if, if it's a black line, a curb, a parking spot, all of the black lines on there are included in our, in our bond project. Any of the lines that are in red, all the curb, the paving, all of that area would need to be, um, added. It'll be additional work. So in addition, you'll notice, you'll notice some black lines, um, across the new parking lot that we're putting in, you'll see a couple of lines that say W on them. Those are water lines that as a part of our project, we're, we're improving to add the fire sprinklers to the building. So new water lines, new vault, new backflow, um, all that work will be new. There's also some storm sewer work. You see some black lines running diagonally across the drive. That storm sewer work was going to happen in our project. So that's not included in the city's work. So the one thing I'm going to talk about here, and then we'll go to the cost and just kind of talk through how this plan then turns into a, a cost estimate. The areas that are, that have a dark shade, you see, we have, um, the parking lot that's just on the east side of E, the east side of A building. And the new parking lot, the drive next to the new parking lot. And then there's a little strip up in the activities lot. Those are areas that after the city gets done with our project, we're doing a lot of tie-in. There's a lot of cutting of curbs, a lot of modification. And we felt like it would be in our best interest to just do a two-inch overlay on those areas so we don't have Frankenstein pavement, you know, going on, just to clean the whole thing up. Plus, there's a lot of restriping. Helps you just get all the lines off and get everything restripped and back the way it goes. You'll also notice in an efficiency standpoint, the parking lot that's on in the corner on the east side of A, we've rotated the direction of the parking, not only to get traffic going in the right direction, but to also maximize the amount of spaces they can get. So if you look at the black dashed line around this, and you counted all the parking spaces that were within that black dashed line, pre-Blue Parkway improvements. And then you took all the work in red and transpose that parking count change. This plan, as you see it, shows an increase of four parking spaces. The reason we've, we've added four parking spaces is because we've not yet evaluated the campus for their needs for ADA parking. And so we're, we're still working on the right locations and working on some drive improvements on where the right place for those ADA spots are. So we feel like those four extra spaces are going to get eaten up here by the time we add the ADA spots in. So in our opinion, and in our engineer's opinion, um, this plan is realistically a net zero parking add by the time we add the ADA spots in. Okay. And that would keep our, the numbers we talked about earlier, that's 758. And that would keep our, the numbers we talked about earlier, that's 758, 760 something. That would keep that number at a, at a net zero.
Mr. President, I've got a question, real quick, Wes. We had talked briefly on Friday. There was a discussion around a water line that comes in, maybe it's the same one that's already here. Well, it probably is the same one that's already here. So there's a dark black, you know, W on that page three.
Correct, page three.
And then to the, my right, your left, I guess, or whatever. It becomes a grayish line, right?
Right.
So would our costs run up to that point based on the bond project, correct?
Yeah, the, the black lines that are on the west.
Yes.
Those are a part of our bond project.
Okay, so one of the questions that we were trying to flush out, I guess, was that, as that is affected, I presume, with this new cut-in, is that, is that new cost borne by us or by the city? Or do we know? Or is that next on the next page?
We can talk through that a little bit next on the.
Okay.
Let's talk through the estimate and I think I'll.
Touch on that?
Touch on that. The, the quick answer about the water line, I'll tell you honestly, is that, again, we, we've not fully surveyed this area. This is all, this is all two-dimensional information, essentially. I mean, we've got some rough topographic information. But they haven't really accurately looked at the depth of that water line and where that road cut was going to be. Lowering the water line would not, it's not like it's a deal breaker. It's not a huge, huge thing. It's a, it's a piece. You know, water's not like sewer. You can, you can go up and down and it's a pressurized line. So, so let's talk through the, the cost. And so let's just go to the bottom right corner anyway. I mean, it's 1.1 million dollars. Previously, we, we had talked about a million and a half. And as I said, you know, that was a really quick estimate that was put together. We spent some time and reevaluated work, made sure that we had a really good, you know, defensible position here on what improvements needed to be made. And so first thing.
Is the 1.1 without the third entryway onto the campus?
Yes, yeah, I'll explain that. So how we got down to the 1.1. So first of all, I saw that the engineer had some irrigation cost into the estimate. We pulled that out. This is not an area that we would, we would add irrigation. We pulled out the, the concrete curbs because, or the concrete approaches because that area was included in the city's project. We pulled out any retaining wall work. And so those items are, you'll see on the, that are highlighted on the, the estimate. We pulled out the asphalt overlay of that area, although not a huge cost, about $40,000. And we had also proposed some site lighting in that area, which is a goal of ours to improve site lighting. And so, you know, justifiably from the city, would not necessarily be something that, that, that they would have. So with the site cost included, that's one point, about 1.1, or with a soft cost. So as Emily mentioned, the other item that, that we pulled out is the drive that accesses the stadium off of Blue Parkway. So hypothetically, their work, the Blue Parkway curve and as it cuts through our site, they're putting an approach in on the, that southeast corner of our, of our building. But the, the drive that accesses the athletic complex, which is a, it's a real benefit for us. I think we all agreed early on, it'd be nice to have another way in and out of the stadium. But that's something that would be a benefit to the school district that we felt like, just in fairness to the process, we would line item that out of the estimate. So what you see on the bottom of this page is the itemized cost of what that, that driveline would be, just the red portion of that driveline on your plan. So roughly $157,000 for that piece of it.
Because they would still do that, the, the entrance way, right? The city would still do the entrance way.
Yeah, yeah. That's correct. So I flew through this pretty quickly. Emily, can you think of anything I forgot to cover?
No, and I appreciate you and Michael pulling together so quickly to help refine this. So really, our, our options are, it's really 1.1 million if we don't want the third entryway and it's closer to 1.25 if we want the third entryway onto the campus, right?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Okay. So really, we wanted to just offer an opportunity, since the TIF Commission is meeting tomorrow, just to have an opportunity for the board to actually discuss this project and the merits of it, knowing that the city would be rerouting Blue Parkway. There would be an impact to our campus after we've done our bond work. This work is projected 23, is that correct?
That's the last we were told. They would begin right about the time our renovation work finishes in 23, so.
And so the question is, we, we recognize there's a value in safety in, in realigning Blue Parkway. The question is, is that worth the million that the district would have to contribute in order to make this a possibility? The city has really shared that they've, are doing a lot with the Missouri Highway Patrol in order to support their relocation. And I think they've got between six or eight million dollars that they're putting forward to make this project a possibility. The district did submit a letter in March requesting that the city include the district's costs within the TIF project. We had some discussions on Friday whether that's a mandatory cost that would have to, expenditure that would have to be covered in the TIF or is that something that's subordinate? If, if the revenue was there, then the city would pay the district back for the costs. So that's kind of the discussion that we're having at this point. Judy, Mike, you were both on the call. Thoughts that you might want to share, questions?
Well, I would first of all say that the city is not really supportive of us adding the cost to the TIF plan. They indicated to us that we could amend the resolution that the TIF Commission is going to consider tomorrow to put our costs into that resolution. But they, I took away from the conversation, they are not supportive of that, of, of us putting that additional cost in there or make, or amending the resolution to do so. You know, when I look at this from a financial perspective and what, what the city shared with us was that, right now, with all four areas of the TIF project that are in this whole TIF area, they are counting on all of that revenue and still at this time can only cover about 50% of the cost to move the highway patrol. Does that make sense? Because they have some money that, the 2 million, that they think the state will chip, chip in on that. They also are making an application, I think, to MoDOT for the other two. They think there's potentially some money they can recover from the sale of the land, which is anywhere between like 1.8 and 2 acres, from what they told us. And they have estimated that, oh, maybe it's a little bit more.
One, no, no.
1.8 and 2 million.
2 million, yeah.
Yeah, so they think they, that's what the land is worth there. So that's kind of where we are.
And the point of trying to put, so that's basically 4 million dollars that the city's contributing, 2 million, 2 million of which they will, you know, recover immediately. And then the other 2 million through the sale of the property, the where the highway patrol sits today. And, and down along what would actually be, I shouldn't, yeah, down, I'm sorry, south of where the highway patrol sits today, so closer to the land that is the ramp right now. Does that make sense? And then to add our 1 million dollars to the entire TIF becomes problematic because they don't believe that they'll recapture the additional 1 million. Well, we could amend the recommendation to say, hey, the school district is next in line to receive more money that might come through. But that didn't seem to have much merit, at least in the conversation. So we could certainly say, hey, we're going to line up next in line after the city recovers their full 4 million. But they don't believe that bucket's going to get any bigger past 4 million. So that, there, so we should anticipate having a cost of what this is.
Am I, I'm, I'm correct in understanding, even if we saw that money, it's how many years down the road, right? 20, what was, was the?
Well.
23. 23.
23 year TIF. I mean, the money could come sooner, but at minimum, probably at, at, at best hopes, it's seven, eight, 10 years, 12 years out. I mean, yeah, it's years, years and years ahead. So real dollars to us early, you know, amortized over time is going to take some, so.
Well, I know it's redundant, but as we've said before, this would have been helpful information to have earlier before we started planning for all of our capital improvements and considered putting it into our capital improvements projects. So since we didn't and we don't, I don't believe we have the money right now, but do we have, you know, what's the, what's our financial picture that's going to tell us whether we have this kind of money or not to expend?
Well, I, I think the city, and I don't want to speak for them, but my, my takeaway from the conversation with them is, was that they believe we have sufficient money in the bond issue to cover this additional million-dollar cost. And I think we basically told them we don't believe we do. We've allocated that to all the projects and that considering where we're going to be on state aid and the fact that we do transfer money from the operating fund now to cover capital projects, we may be limited in our ability to do that.
Yeah, I mean, looking out to 23, 24, 25, you know, those numbers go from where we are today at 53 million to 30? If, if, if this holds true. So that reserve number is not where we want to be.
And if I could just elaborate and answer your question a little bit too, Kim. You know, we spent a lot of time, early fall last year, with student groups, with teacher groups, community groups, evaluating what the needs were for Leesum and High's campus. And nowhere in any of that needs assessment on how we should spend up, bond dollars, did anyone say, I want you to tear out 65 parking places and go build them up here under a retaining wall on the athletic slot. That's just not how we would have chosen or prioritized capital expenditures on this campus. So now granted, it is nice to get an, an entry into the stadium. But we're, this is getting forced onto the campus because of the road realignment. It's not something that we would have prioritized.
What's the actual resolution that you guys have to consider tomorrow night?
I don't know the language off the top of my head, but it's.
Can you give us a really quick sum, like?
Did you bring it? I didn't, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, essentially, it's recognizing four areas that are, you know, deemed as blighted.
Maped out, right, yeah, okay.
And, you know, this being a large part of it, certainly with highway patrol and the ground that comes with moving the ramp. So essentially, it's, the ramp goes north, city receives those, that land. They look at it as an opportunity to, to develop that land. I mean, it's, it's, it's nice to think about it. You know, if the project as, as it is, is a cool idea and a good project. Then quick trip, they move that lane up, quick trip actually moves south and they're in the other section on that south side of the ramp, but north of 50. And then you have some other property to the east, kind of section two, I believe, or three. And then there's a section north, which is the old Chinese buffet building, which would actually be a Wendy's development. That's the projection, north of HMH Auto.
And then I think the other, the last part of that is where the Applebee's is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry about that, mm-hmm.
Yeah. And I, I guess the thing is that basically, it's the same resolution that was presented in February. They've not made any changes to that from what.
Right.
We were told at, at our conversation on Friday.
So our funding isn't, isn't there. We don't, our, our bond issue fund, money is, is spoken for. It's not fluid. If that's what they're thinking, it's, it's not fluid. So with that spoken for, I, I don't know, see where we're going to come up with at least 1.1 million dollars. If there's any kind and generous person out there who has 1.1 million dollars who'd like to donate to the school district so we could put in that, make those changes, that'd be great. But given that, I don't know of anybody out there right now with that kind of money that, that's going to give us that money for that. I, I don't think we can be positive for this.
Well, one of the things that I think about in terms of that whole project is, I, I do question, you know, if it's really financially feasible for the city to, you know, move it forward. But that's neither here nor there. But the other thing would be, even if we do have, and we'll have some additional bond resources based on investments and that kind of thing. But I guess in my mind, I think if we, we as a board need to prioritize how that's spent because our dollars are at a premium. And would we place a high priority on spending it that, in that way? So I think that's, that's really more to me, the, the conversation we would have, which, you know, I, I think.
A criticism that was received flat out during the bond campaign and discussion was, you know, school district be attentive to the capital projects, maintenance, ongoing maintenance. Because if you are now where you are because of X number of years, then the 224, and that came up a little bit, Wes, I believe, the 224 is really there to make sure we're maintaining the buildings that we have. And I mean, be it whatever building or infrastructure we need to maintain, that, if, if there was a critical analysis of the bond issue, that's what I heard mostly was, it's great, you guys have a plan, it is a great plan, but don't take your eye off the ball of what you owe your future generations to keep those buildings maintained. And that's a valid criticism. And I think that's, again, where Kyle, you would be, and Wes, really, we're part of that 224, is.
Well, and it also takes a little bit of pressure off of us. You know, we can use the proceeds from the revenue from the interest towards capital projects and, and maybe we won't have to do transfers from operating and so into capital projects. So as, as years go on, that might be a, a strategy we choose to take.
Um, do we know, can this project move forward without us? Can they force this drawing in and still not encroach on Leesum and its actual campus?
I, I don't know that answer. And Kyle, you may be more positioned for that. But, and, and recognize, TIF Commission is a recommending body. And that's it. So if city council says, this is awesome, this is what we're doing, fine. I mean, that's a decision, you're elected to make that decision and it moves forward and we plan accordingly. I mean, that's, that's, it is what it is. So Kyle, you can, or Mr. Gurrell, I'm sorry, you can mean in on that if you so choose.
Yeah, it's just Kyle. Yeah, it's, and I'm not sure if we shared it with you, but the very first meeting that Emily and I and Wes had with the city, the roadway actually came much closer to Leesum and High School. It was a much shallower bend. And we were a little taken back by that. They redrew and made a sharper turn. And what it really comes down to is just roadway design when it comes to what speed and what traffic pattern do you want to allow around this bend? And so they want as shallow of a curve as they can get. But I mean, yeah, technically, you could, you could take Blue Parkway, put in a stoplight, make a left turn, make a right turn and, you know, still get Blue Parkway's light away from 50 Highway. I think we all know that's maybe the extreme, that's not realistic. But to make a long answer long, I mean, I. answer long, I mean, I, I'm just not sure how steep that curve they would really, would be a breaking point for them on making the project not feasible.
I mean, hats off to the city, because they really have embraced our conversation. And I've not been on in all of them naturally, but even Friday's conversation was more about how can we have full information coming into tonight's meeting, knowing this meeting was about budget, and then also a larger, fuller discussion about these plans. And ultimately, it's been historically a collaborative partnership. So it's not as if we're, we have never said this is crazy, we've said we just need to be diligent with where we are as a district. And I don't think the city has ever said, well, we're going to force this, you know, on you. It's more about trying to work on what, you know, long-term needs to happen in this area. So, yeah, yeah, the decision ultimately can be made, but both parties are working to make the best decision for the long-term, that's for sure.
I do have a, I do have a question, if I could, Mike. If the city's moving forward in 2023, you said, then we would anticipate this work for us to occur in 2024 or 2025? Do you know that timeline?
I don't know exactly how their work would be phased.
And do we have our capital projects planned out so that we know clearly what capital projects would be planned for those years?
So we, Kyle has done a fantastic job with building a capital projects plan. One of the things with that capital projects plan is, and that's probably a deeper discussion that we need to have as a board as well, is how we fund that capital project plan. Again, you know, looking at the need of anywhere between 8 to 12 million a year and how we actually fund that, because we can't, we typically don't. So there is a plan, but.
And I think that would be my question, what projects do we not do, could we not do because we are going to do this, right? If that's, if those are the options.
Right.
And if we had that information to also share with the city, seems like that might be a good discussion as well. Not just a dollar impact, but when you put it to the project, sometimes that helps those conversations also.
So if we, just, just another question here, if, if the city went forward with the project, but we still weren't necessarily on board with our cost associated with it, and they decided with the drawings and whatever, what is the, for lack of a better term, least amount that we would have to do to that south parking lot as a result of their construction to maintain at least some semblance of parking and traffic flow and stuff like that, understanding that, that we may not have the appetite for a million and a half dollars?
Well, there's a land right-of-way issue here. I mean, am I understanding your question correctly? Okay, yeah. So that would be something that I think we've had a discussion with Joe about, so.
Are you wanting us then to hopefully give some direction to these two for tomorrow, right? I mean, that's what, ultimately, we need to get to that. What do we want as, as a board for our two TIF commission members to take back with them to tomorrow night's meeting? That's what we need to make a decision on. Right now, I mean, I think most of us would probably agree, and, and anybody's, feel free to speak up, is that a million and a half out of the gate is going to be tough, right? To justify to people for this particular project. That being said, if the city's going to continue to push forward anyway, right?
Right.
Then we're going to have, then we're going to be playing reactive to what the city is actually doing. You know, my, my, probably where I would land on this right now is, is I still think it would be worth it to at least attempt to amend the, the resolution to try to recover some of those costs. I really do. I think it's worth the ask, you know, in part of, look, we're trying to work as much as we possibly can with you on this, recognizing uncertain financial times, recognizing that you may not have the funds for the total project to begin with, you know, and, and understanding obviously that we still won't even see or recoup these funds for a decade, you know, at least. So I think I would kind of land there on, see if that conversation gets anywhere. I don't know if other board members have an idea on that one.
It has seemed like a non-starter, I will tell you. And especially in listening to the input from, you know, Mr. Metz last Friday, where we were and how we left it, knowing that the dollars are really spoken for. And granted, if it moves forward, we, I mean, are we legally obligated to do the full 224 everywhere we said we're going to? I mean, I suppose there's some fluidity there, but I don't know if that's the word to use, but fluid structure there, but again, that's a commitment we made to the bond, to the public, knowing that's where we're going and fully transparent of saying, this is where the dollars are. So the 1.5 or 1.1 is not, not in the 224. So it's a matter of finding it somewhere else.
What else don't we do?
Right. What else don't we do, but that is still not part of the 224? Right.
In your conversations with the city, do you even think they would be like even open to the suggestion of even a percentage, rather than us saying, hey, our mandatory costs of this, we want to fold into the TIF instead of percentage, almost like a cost share burden with them on, on these things?
Our preliminary conversations with the city, I would have said no. I think they, I believe they made it pretty clear to us that there were any changes to Lee Summitt High School campus would be our cost. I do feel like we had a little bit of a different tone on Friday, if, if you want us to try to pursue that.
Well, knowing that they're extending $2 million that they feel that they might not even receive, because it's contingent on the property sale. And if there's no retailer or developer walking up and saying, hey, here's 2 million bucks, we're going to purchase this ground in 2023, 2024, 2025, you know, is that appetite even there? There are so many unknowns right now. And certainly, MoDOT doesn't have the dollars. Highway Patrol has said, we don't have the dollars, so here you go.
I think the city feels like they're at risk by, what, approximately $6 million. So I, they would appreciate it if we would pick up this 1 million.
Yeah.
I think times are hard for all of us with the city, with, you know, lack of tax, you know, tax dollars coming in, and we're in the same position with the talk with the governor and our, you know, budget being cut in essence by that. So I don't see that we can commit tax dollars to this right now. I really don't understand how we could do that.
And that's where I land, is love the concept, but in, in our role and responsibility to where we are in the LSR 7 budget and plan, I wouldn't be voting in favor of the, of the recommendation.
You know, we didn't have an appetite for it last month, and the situation hasn't gotten better unless.
No.
Right, so.
Well, and it's with where we are, where the state is, and where Wes is confident, no, it hasn't. Judy, do you want to offer anything more?
No, I'm.
Okay.
You know, I, I think the whole thing is, you know, there's a lot of unknowns at this point because of a lot of things. Even, you know, their MoDOT funding, I asked what the source of their, MoDOT's money was, whether that was tied in any way to any kind of general revenue or whatever. And they, they, they didn't really know the answer to that. They were going to find that out because they're going to have to go kind of through a grant process and, and to apply to MoDOT for part of the cost share on the actual construction of the roadway. And, and, you know, I said, well, you know, my experience has been sometimes agencies take applications and then they're not fully able to fund those. They either have to prorate them or have to delay that. And so I think that there, again, that's another factor that would just increase the city's costs. And if they're already maximizing the TIF revenue, which only covers about 50% of the cost of that, I think, you know, any hitch in that financial plan is going to be costly to either our taxpayers or, you know, the, the city taxpayers. So that's, you know, the thing that I keep going back to is, I personally don't think the TIF makes any financial sense. And I'm, I'm trying, I'm struggling to get past that part. I mean, that's my bottom, kind of my bottom line.
Is there any board member who has an appetite for this right now? I mean, truthfully, because if, if not, I think we could probably, I think both board members could go to that meeting, state why we have our, what our concerns are, exactly what we've been stating tonight, and when called for the vote, we, we wouldn't support it. Does anybody have anything that they would, does that sound like unanimous kind of on that? Want to make sure we're all in agreement? Okay.
Thank you.